I mean. You get really used to that legacy thick client.
All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the Wednesday, January twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, Menden's Select Board Meeting. And we are doing a goal setting. All right, so. I think everyone is here in person. Everyone on the select board is here in person. So we are here, we have one main item on the agenda, which is to discuss our fiscal twenty twenty five goals. So I know Jeremy has some slides prepared, but I just, yeah, I think this, we're going to be revisiting some of our previously set goals to see where we are as well as talking about goals for there's not a lot of twenty twenty five left, but we have not had much time to really talk through the goals in the last few months with intense schedule for other topics. So.
All right.
Thank you.
So. Okay. All right, so put together a small agenda for today. Talk about the hierarchy of kind of organizational approach, review of some of our outstanding goals, which is just a rehashing of what I had in the packet for you earlier. We're going to define what a goal is, and then we're going to discuss. So. We talk a lot about, you know, how goals fit in and our goals, actions, our goal, statement of values. So trying to think about this hierarchy, we have the purpose and mission of the organization. We've heard about about that at MMA about defining a mission statement for the organization or a statement of values for the board or the town. And I think that can be useful. We can discuss it in our goals, whether we want to to execute that as an organization. And the next kind of after you state your your purpose and mission, we have our, we have our vision. Right? And our vision is the the principles and the moral compass of the organization. It's it's the culture, it's the ethics, it's our, you know, values of teamwork and community. Then we, what we're talking about tonight, we're going to talk about our goals. So how do we take that purpose? How do we take that purpose? How does that translate into our culture? What are our goals that flow from that? And then what we likely won't talk too much about, but are part of the goals are the objectives of the execution plan, our KPIs, revisions of them. So.
KPI, sorry.
Key performance indicators.
Thank you.
So how you measure something. And so the way I've I've heard it defined of a few times the same way that if if the goal is to run a marathon, your objectives are to run three times a week and your execution plan is saying, I'm going to do it Tuesday morning and Friday afternoon. And your KPIs are, well, I did a ten minute mile and now I'm going to, how do I get to a, you know, I want to measure it to make sure I can get to a nine minute mile. I'm in revisions when you get hurt and how you go, but the goal is to run a marathon. So what we're talking about tonight is defining what what we want to run, not, you know, what days we're going to run. So this is, this is the hierarchy in which I hope we can function. So I want to go through, so here, I'm just easel over here that I inherited. There's some some goals that were written down. I'm not sure why you all did this session.
It's like a year ago.
Yeah.
Maybe more than that because we already went through one. I think it was, oh, yeah.
I don't know who's handwriting this is to try to. So just reviewing some of the current goals, finance policies and procedures. Like I said, we've got a couple of different drafts. Those are a couple of different documents. Those are both in progress and we'll have a draft for you next meeting. Recruiting volunteers ongoing for a number of the different committees we've had. We've staffed a few. We've had three volunteers, I believe, for the agricultural committee, which is great. Update personnel policy, same as a kind of finance policy, it's ongoing with HR. We choose part time, our HR coordinator, comp class and switch to by losing the payrolls, kind of this little bit background. But it's certainly a fiscal twenty five priority. Performance reviews, that's part of the personnel policy update to make sure that we have those. I'd like to do one maybe on a calendar year basis rather than wait until the end of fiscal twenty six to do something. Select board policies and procedures, that final draft is still with council. Capital plan priorities. So we funded much of fiscal twenty twenty six already. So as I've been working with Mike Goddard and the capital improvement working group, it's about getting department heads in the in the mind frame, in the, you know, to flex that muscle of this is how we do this every year, this is the cadence. So that's where we're at now. Establishing continued department head meetings. We do those. They're just really disruptive to operations because a department head meeting becomes essentially an all staff meeting, a closed town hall, because everyone is up here. So I I try to keep them, it's the one big thematic thing and then have a bunch of little updates. They're more like bi-monthly rather than monthly, but the most important part of them isn't them listening to me, like getting the updates is important, but that could be an email. The most important part is getting them in a room and they end up talking with each other and half the meeting is not a formal meeting, it's just them chatting, which is useful.
I think just that to gold end meetings is actually thematic, could tie back to your period. Because that was sort of the brainstorm we had, that the objective was to increase and institutionalize communication in the departments. That was how it manifested. So once we go forward, I think we should kind of think about that because the department head meeting interrupts operations, but so sort of the the execution to get to the objective may not have been this. Well, thought out, that's sort of what we all just congregated to, you know what I mean? But I like, I still have that, still think it's.
You know, and it is, and you know, having, just having an email, hey, heads up everybody, and you send it out is not as impactful as, you know, you can't raise a hand.
Can I ask you, did, have you surveyed staff yet on any of this stuff? In case you're looking for KPIs to measure.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good idea. No, I haven't. It's anecdotal, again, we're small enough, so it's.
Yeah. It it in every industry. Like, this is like branded. The stuff you don't want to deal with, but it's, but but measurement, standard measurement is is like a pattern now. And things like standard user surveys where you ask, what's your satisfaction level on one to five? Is super common to to kind of set baselines and then measure against it without anecdotal evidence. And so that's. But 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 not if it's like two, two or three questions that takes you five seconds, you know? Like, and it's, and you make it anonymous and and you just let it flow. Yeah. But that's what your performance reviews are for. Or you're saying there should be some other department level measurement of satisfaction?
Of course.
Okay.
Review existing select board policy procedures, sounds kind of a duplicate senior center expansion. We kicked off with the architectural firm with our study funded ARPA funds on Monday. Folks from the senior community center, building committee, COA staff, myself and the architects. So we're, we'll update the board as that kind of gets going. We're just on the document and data dump we're done right now. Library rectory resolution, I'm not a library director this morning, there's a twenty five thousand dollar fiscal twenty five earmark. The earmark needs to be spent by June thirtieth, so we're we're hustling right now and we'll have more more updates on that as we go. Trash property, property. Appraisers have been super difficult to coordinate with, but one called me back after I sent this out to you on Monday. Go for some additional information and we're meeting again next week to try to try to get an appraisal of that for strategy as we as we execute before. And Cook Cemetery, I I actually, I don't know what that is. I know what Cook Cemetery is and where it is. I just don't know what the objective of the board there was, what's to find a resolution and expand, get access to.
That was expansion.
Well.
Or it was too small and we needed.
Well, to encapsulate, well, the first step is, I'm not sure, I don't know how big the Cook Cemetery is. The problem is that we don't have adequate burial ground space within the town. Because One Dale is completely sold out. And the Quaker burial ground, you know, is limited. And we own this property, we've owned it for a hundred years. And I don't know how, but but there'd have to be some work to be done just to you know, to even to even access it.
Is it the one near the Cahill farm?
The access roads off of Providence, right?
Yes, well, it's actually technically it's right off of the end of cemetery.
Where that barn is.
Right, the behind it. But what would be? That's why I wanted to talk with Sherwood Cahill. Because it doesn't really impact, you know, I don't believe it impacts the potential sale.
It is not, it's the parcel was carved and it keeps that peace with the Cahills, that's not part of the proposed sale.
But what it what it could do is provide an access road of some type.
And there is a paper street there that comes in.
So that's the whole idea, that would be the, isn't this, we need, we need somebody to do some kind of an evaluation of where the cemetery actually is and how it would, how it would you know, how it would serve. And I know that Gary Smith lives down on Providence Road and was a local Realtor. Was very much interested in pursuing some type of new burial ground cemetery some several years ago, but the type for it because they were always putting on fire, you know, at dealing prices and but I think it's, and and again, just just to wrap it up, we do have this civil war monument that we can move. And I just, I think I mentioned it at the last meeting that they said they were going to move it. Does that mean they would help us mediate the road if we wanted to do that? You know, there's a lot of moving parts to this, but could be a way to get the state to fund remediation of the road to give us the access in there.
And that's, that's under a locked gate at the moment. So there's things that need to be done.
It is, I mean, it is, there is specifically a lock gate, that gate actually belongs to the Barney family. And they put that lock on there. Because it was essentially them and Cahill that had access to it. And the road used to go over the river and come out onto the end of their road, which is on Peter Dent's property.
Right.
But the bridge has been gone.
Okay, be funny, Brooke.
Over, over the, I don't know if that's Mill River or Martin, either one.
Mill River.
And so Barney just took it upon himself to put it there because the way he explained it to me when he was alive was that for insurance purposes, his liability insurance wouldn't give him insurance unless he stopped people from going on his property. And since that road only accessed his property, he would lock it. You know, but it is definitely, does definitely belong to the town. At one point, it was, he tried, somebody was making an argument that the town abandoned. So we lost that access, but clearly we still own the land. So it was never abandoned. You know, we just, just because we didn't keep cutting the bolt. You know, and actually, for a long time, it wasn't really locked.
Yeah, there's an Amoresco sign with a phone number there now to get access.
Well, depending on when you go there, it's not really, it's just a chain that's just kind of out there.
Okay. So, you know, now I know the Cook Cemetery thing, and you know, perhaps a goal will be, you know, increase burial ground space in in town and then this. So when we talk about goals and defining the goal, this is kind of an old framework and folks still really use it. I've used it on like team stuff before. So smart goals are specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and timed out. So, you know, I think a lot of me speak for themselves, relevant, you know, to the board's authority and kind of how it relates to what we think the purpose and mission are. Achievable and time bound are related, you know, we're talking about fiscal twenty twenty five goals, so you know, to say build a new senior center, it's not going to happen by June thirtieth, right? Specific, you can't say get better, you have to. So just try to think of this smart acronym as through our goals here.
Is it, is it safe to say that as we start, we can throw out, I mean, I wouldn't want to try to worst with anything, but maybe we kind of get the theme out there and then we can kind of come back to the smart and kind of shape it.
I think that's, yeah. So the roundtable here, we're sitting around, so I'd like to, this isn't super rigid, but I would like rather than like say four things, Jason say four things, I'd like to kind of have members introduce stuff. I will go around if we can start with what we want to start, but go around, say a goal, we'll discuss it, but then let another member come in and discuss things and we'll kind of go around and come back.
MDR format.
And then once we have, once we have everything here, we can talk about how we want to prioritize. I think my goal is for your goals to not exceed five. Have, if we have twelve goals, you know, we're not going to be able to effectively prioritize that as staff and do that in the next five months. So that's where, that's kind of my framing for this. I think that's the end of here, so let me go back to, as we, as we talk about hierarchy here. So smart goals, you know, not objectives, execution plans, anything like that. So who wants to, who wants to start first? Lainey, you want to throw out the first goal you want to talk about?
Sure. So I guess one goal that I had in mind was actually relevant to the things at the top of the pyramid, which is to talk about something like what are, you know, related to the keynote from the MMA Connect three fifty one, which is about having something like core values define our mission statement for the town and and we don't believe that we formally have one. So like for our town government, like what are what are the core values?
Our CEO at our company attributes the creation and definition of core values to the setting of our success and culture for the last thirty years. It's something that they did a long time ago, but after they were established, but yeah, I think this is really important. And I think we heard about how important it was in a very influential way.
But it it ties into sort of some of my other I guess, big thing, they're more like vision and values, but like in terms of like community, community engagement and trust. And I feel like, you know, those are sort of, those are maybe values that I see, but that I think potentially relate directly to some of the the goals that we have.
I think having a goal being to define the stuff above it in the pyramid makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. And we can figure out where that lives and the document defines that.
And because you want, we won't go too far into those, but you want something that's, you know, broad enough to apply to large swaths of town.
Like troops do no harm. Very easy, simple. Core value.
All right, great.
All right, so open up my notes. So when I was brainstorming, since I didn't go to the conference, I probably was looking at. So things that I was thinking about that we can start exploring is to start defining how we reorganize facilities and maintenance departments and we start cross training the projects. So basically, what do we want? The highway department and parks to look like to improve service and set ourselves up for any of these facilities expansions that we want. So say we don't want a new senior center, well, that also comes with increased load on parks. And I think right now they will need to expand before that. And I don't think that's doable, you know, before end of fiscal twenty five, but I'm fine.
So part of the fiscal twenty six budget request from both highway and parks is going to have some semblance of that. I'm, I have a budget meeting next Wednesday with both highway and parks, so I've overlapped the end of one, beginning of the other, so we can have a short discussion of the two.
Yeah, and and whatever we do will probably, you know, probably require maybe a town meeting vote or something for real. Interesting to say. Well, wonderful.
I I think mine's another, but now that we've established the bylaw review committee, I'd like to see the May, and I've already reiterated this in the bylaw review committee, but I'd like to see the May town meeting set a pattern for how bylaws will come into that meeting and be presented and be worked on. I don't know what that pattern is, but like in order to be successful at reviewing and getting bylaws passed, they need to be categorized and bundled and worked on and presented in a way that can be understood. You know, easily and can be voted on easily. So I I believe that there's a organization to how that should be approached with the town and I I think we should try some some patterns out. And I think the May town meeting for some of these lighter weight ones that we're looking at right now is a good way to test what that means. You know, if we, if we bring five, is that too many? If we bring two, does it matter if you separate categories or not? How does the audience respond to that, collecting all that information and bringing it back and rehashing it? And then setting expectations that that will happen, you know, fall, spring, fall, spring, and then fall, you'll see this type of stuff. And in spring, you'll be see this type of stuff. So that it's predictable and it's not a surprise and it's transparent and department heads, if they need to, can work towards those dates and time with the bylaw review committee, all that kind of stuff. I think we can set that by May. I think that's possible.
You know, confident in that group, you know, already in a few meetings, they have a really well established procedure of how you get a request in front of them, right? They've got the form, they've got the database, they're going through it, they're calling stakeholders. So they they're establishing their own internal procedure.
Yeah.
So I I think they've got a good opportunity to kind of establish a broader.
Yeah, I agree. That's like a nice meetable goal.
West, yeah. Which is next week already.
Oh, yeah, is it? Okay, yeah, next week. Next week's February.
I started to say, we have six months to execute.
Yeah.
You have five.
Wait, five months to execute?
All right, great. Mike?
I'm not sure if this is operations or or finance or even other, but I think we need a plan for all of the town land. A comprehensive inventory and plan. The thing just saying that we just want all this open space.
Land in general, not individual parcels. You're talking like, or.
That that's, maybe that's getting too granular to say each one, but I just, I think we need to have, because there's somebody, we bought the pack property. Okay. What's the plan? You know, we already own the Cook property, but you know, there's other pieces, there's even, there's even pieces that we might own. Probably more is just to get a comprehensive list of all the town, that's the first step, because there are parcels in town that we don't have a wood.
How would we know we don't know? Is that like, we would, we would look at the tax records and. Okay.
And usually assessors.
Yes.
The assessors don't.
Be like things we're not getting paid for.
But they they know all the parcels, they know, which we do, and they have said that the question parts on there.
You can see them run GIS sometimes, like usually they're way off in the middle of like a swamp or whatever.
Okay.
You'll open it, it's owner on there.
But there's a particular.
Oh, yeah, okay.
All right, I think that's executable as well. Mike?
Yes.
I want to close out, finalize it, something. As evidenced by a updated work chart with a new additional rules, we still use and gradually incorporate in the budget process.
So I do those kind of dovetail together.
Yeah, my number four dovetails with this, so it's missed by this.
Our design with we've done more chart executable in the public.
Well, and I'd say if we more actively include goals that may not exist today, we should. And if we can incorporate it into the budget process funded, great one. If we work out, we can propose it, we can say this is it, that actually need a vote, we actually want to execute it horizontally. I would suggest that what you just said, having an org chart, I think should be the number one, I mean, besides budget, my task should be the number one thing we should do because it's, it's chaos without it. I I think that, that what I'm trying to do is close out when we did calls.
Yeah.
Right, it's, it's been.
We did something, that's something that we paid money.
All right, let's do a snake order, I'll check. All right, your first.
Two, I want to finalize specific policy procedures that inspire improving. Select, select work policy, financial, which includes cap planning and personnel. Have your.
That was.
That was on my list too, so.
And finalize and adopt financial personnel and select board policy.
Jeremy, I'm taking notes if if it's easier for you to allow me to take the notes. I don't know how you want to.
Yeah, I think more note taking is probably better for us to go do it. I like it on here so we can see if we're weighted one way or the other. And I've got some highlighters as we go through and we're going to prioritize.
Magic quadrant.
Sorry.
It's a magic quadrant.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't know if you can something grab.
I didn't notice that because it's, you know, it's.
All right, Mike? I know you have lots of overlapping priorities, so you might already have some stuff.
Yeah, I'm I I think what you've got there already is already a pretty big kind of, I I wouldn't really add anything more to the to my, everything else I'm thinking of is is kind of specific to the other things that are already up there.
And as we, you know, I'll I'll formalize this into into a document to send around and then we can all annotate it a little bit on what I think some steps are and some responsible parties, right? Like finalize and adopt financial personnel policy and select policy. And then below that, I'll say financial policy, you know, under grid, kind of responsible for the TA, update where it's at right now, and then go through that with all of these. So we have, so we can, you know, it's attainable, sometimes the A is accountable, so like who's responsible for them?
Not going to use RCI. Managers, no, not the smallest or accountable communication, just support.
But yeah, that's another management.
I'm glad you said that, I don't want to use it.
Jason?
Um, so a a small one, I mentioned it earlier, but since we're doing it here and it's easily achievable under culture. Objectively measuring the the culture here is something I think we can do this year and we've all been saying it. I know we all subjectively know things are better. But it's really nice to confirm that by asking everybody. So it's an easy task.
Yeah, like a, like a quick survey.
Just a quick, quick survey out, anonymous out to the staff, ask them some questions you want to know and follow up on it every year. That's it.
We have a suggestion box, just say it.
Do we have a suggestion box?
I don't know.
We had a suggestion box, you could put that suggestion in.
Yeah, I I feel like that's an easy win.
Uh, yeah, the, the difficult, the important and difficult part is then having the time series.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, just put a calendar tickler on every six months and press send every six months or automate it.
Check the temperature.
Yeah, it it's something that I that I do in in my field all the time. It's very useful. Doesn't almost matter what you ask. It's just very useful to see the change over time.
Great.
Uh, let me see. So one of mine is not really as, you know. Uh, let me see, so one of mine is not really as, you know. Uh, townwide, so a- as the agcom representative, I really want to see the agcom rebuttal. I know we've, we've made some strides, but and that goes, I guess that goes for other dormant committees as well, but like. Got enough people to stand up a committee and get a meeting regularly again, I'd like to see them go, because they have a a role to play, you know.
I'm interested partying my office today, asking.
I I've been trying to recruit heavily.
I would like to see some of our commercial. Or more commercial farming, you know, places sitting on that.
Yeah, I I think, yeah, I think people that are into farming should be there because that is their voice in town government.
Yeah, I think the uh needs to have some new department like that, mortgage support review. Assess and.
Yeah. And and that one, we may have a link up, we've already like started that, but like we can at least start the process. Because there's, there's definitely some zombie committees.
Yeah. I guess we probably should have. About the infrastructure and the water sewer. Question pursuing the last. You know, to have a. Moneys to study.
So would it all be to. Prioritize funding of continued water studies?
Well, the ultimate goal is to provide. Water and sewer on the two commercial areas in town, which is sixteen and. But, you know, I would be happy just to get it. On sixteen from North Ave to the Hookdale.
So is there a place to bank long term?
I was about to say, yeah, we can do multi-year.
Well, that's why I didn't.
Yeah.
Say initially.
Right. But I mean, it's good to keep track of those big picture, long-term goals so that we. Continue to move towards them.
So I guess the the twenty, that, you know, this. Current fiscal years won't be just to.
Put in the parking lot for the F R twenty-six discussion. I mean, this is a five-month window we're talking about.
Right.
Yes.
Chop it out to, you know, your names.
You probably shouldn't put right there, commercial. Some people here. Want to shoot, they start to lose it because I like. I like having my septic system in the backyard.
And and yeah, and of course, no one's under any obligation, but it's. It's incumbent on the town and where to make this a long-term success to preempt residential demand. So we have means that services can tie into when there is some sort of issue on a private well or it becomes economically viable for. For folks to tap in, so um, we will have service availability. The overall goal of the project is the targeted commercial corridors, uh, but that doesn't exempt. Um, you know, residential tie-in.
As as. As an example, you know, sixteen goes past the lake. And everybody around the lake. Have tight tanks now because they've had problems in the past with sewer seeping into the into the body of water, so. Being able to give those people. Sewer tank, instead of them having to have it pumped every week or month or whatever. Is an answer.
And the uh the current, we're in phase three of watering currents water study, uh. They recently completed their prolonged pumping test, um, and our briefing staff in a. What they told me to block out three hours for on February twelfth. Um, and then after that, they're going to present to the water commission, and then I'll ask them to present to this board as well, so we'll have a.
Three hours.
Midday.
Wow.
Yes, so, uh.
That's exciting.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't quite know what's, you know, hope it's good news from them. Um, I know, you know, anecdotally. Unofficially, they've shared good news, and hopefully benefits would be much faster.
Yeah, they've taken three hours to soften it.
So yeah, we'll have something to report shortly. But I think the multi.
So I have my turn next, yeah, so, uh, so I had. What I have written on my list was uh to formalize the capital planning committee to like to, but. I think it relates to that question of. Looking at the boards and committees altogether because there are. Some that are dormant, there, I mean, I think to check in with some of the committees also, I know, like. I'm, um. A select board member of the um land use committee and the talk has come up about like whether. The town could have an energy committee, whether like the land use committee should also be the energy. Committee and, you know, in terms of certain like um funding opportunities, so. So anyway, I feel like it would be useful to to do.
A survey of all of its committees?
Well, potentially, right, so when you talked about the survey, but like to figure out like.
That makes a lot of sense.
Do we have, like, we we're, you know, with our liaison positions, we we're, we have a better sense, but we haven't done. Any sort of coordinated look at them, like what they are. Which which ones are defunct, which ones could be merged or or split.
Establishing capital planning committee is a separate, distinct one because it has to be revitalized.
Right.
And like to kind of. Try to get that committee, we have at least two, maybe three people that are.
Good, yeah, good, yeah, I mean, that was, that was the one that I actually, you know, had on, but I realized it's part of a bigger picture goal. But maybe one that could have, you know.
Why haven't you seen, I think. Community assessment is a thing.
Yeah.
And then, but I think. It's capital things.
You're right, you don't want that to get stuck waiting for the rest to get reviewed, I, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like also to have a org chart of the committees as well and.
I made one.
Where they report or like what their response, like where their reporting responsibility is. Um, that would make it a lot more clear how they link together, maybe that could be part of.
Right, Brendan, you you've made such a thing.
When I was running the first time.
And I know some, yeah, and some of them are in the bylaws and some of them aren't, and some of them, right, like state, like.
Just a nice key code of how this committee fits into our organization here as a whole.
Yeah. I could say.
That's a good one.
Yeah, that is a good one, I could sum what I have. It's like basically what it is, what it does, who's on it, how it reports, and if it has statutory. Responsibilities.
Be, I think, most interesting on how the multiple elective boards interact with each other. You know, especially in a wording authority or employment agreement.
Yeah, so I didn't put that kind of stuff in there, but I I agree, I think that could be.
With the liaison contact, the board chair, like just the metadata that gives the information. Clearly about what this board's capable of.
Yeah. That's, that would be beautiful, who's gonna maintain it?
Uh, well, you're gonna write it all in U M L, so. It'll be easy. It sounds great.
Actually, I have.
I do, and they're sort of, I'm trying to, you know, think. Yes, I'm trying to think sort of like at what point of like goals they are, but like I I, you know, I have. Basically, community engagement and communication with boards and committees and with public, and that's sort of multiple things that I think some are maybe more like. Values and some are more like. Specific, but I think sort of. I do want the boards and committees to feel more connected to each other and and to us, and you know, so, and I think. There is value to the town of that, like in terms of. I mean, we need, we've talked about like with recruitment, we need more people on board and we need, like, it's, a lot of times it feels like the same people doing multiple things. We want more people to do that, but then there's also like an element of. Succession planning as well, right, like we need more, like, we need people who will be. Willing to like run for office, you know, so like to to join the the, you know, the appointed board so that in like, I don't know, two or three years, they might. Like when there's a vacancy, they might want to run, so like, I feel like. So I'm not quite sure where that fits in, but I guess.
If forward to establishing mission.
I feel, I feel like it's more like related to that, so that those.
But it's your sequencing to it, so I'm wondering, is that in it? Is that like actions that come out of us establish, you know, the next five months we're doing a mission. For values, so if I twenty-six, we start stepping in, how do we take that and embed it into the. Operations and committee structures and start to, because there's something there, but it was.
Yeah, I know, I feel it's nebulous, so that's why I'm like.
Get into it more. Your succession planning committees and elected positions, interesting.
Well, yeah, because we, I mean, we talk about it a lot in terms of like staffing, but like we need it for the town as well, for the boards and committees, like that's.
Harder to do, like, how do you, how do you get multi-year commit?
Some of the committees do it kind of okay-ish, right, like pl- planning and C B A, these committees think about like. Who's gonna be present long-term and they try to see finance. I'm not saying they're awesome at it, but they're better than like some of the other committees that aren't, you know, what if. Joe just decides to move out of town and now there's no form anymore and that's that, you know, like. There's not, some put a lot of thought into it, some don't put any.
See, to to me, that desire to. You know, have the succession plan, succession planning is. You know, developing a welcoming culture.
Yeah, I I think you're right.
And that's the way I would, I would term it, what I, what I really.
Yeah.
People need those ones.
At every, at the, every one of you, I went to you and. Encouraged you to do this, because I always felt like there wasn't enough. Welcoming culture atmosphere and I couldn't, but I really, if I had to. I don't know how to put a goal on this, but I just want to make sure that what I, what I'd like to do is make. Make everybody really understand that every resident, you know, has a voice. And I want to, I don't know what the goal is.
Yeah, right.
That's a perfect core value, Mike, right there, is every resident has a voice, that's like a core value, right? Positive intent, like that kind of thing.
And I think if if we could make people understand that and know that we welcome everybody's opinion. I think that stuff takes care of itself.
Well, I think, I mean, but I think we can engage the other boards and committees also, so like, so like, I think, yeah, and I think you're right. It's part of that welcoming culture, but. I think, yeah, we we want more people to join these committees. I mean, we we have committees that need more people. Um, but, yeah, just that general community engagement, like we just, yeah, more voices, they have more connections, so. And we want to. Encourage that, like.
To be able to lead this effort. Be by example, bring it together.
Right.
And it's mine.
Okay, so I know, yeah. And but there was a, the, like. Years and years ago, there was an attempt at having like a multi-board. Meeting with like a representative from each board. Uh, yeah. But anyhow, like, so that there was more communication among the boards and it happened like once in my memory, like I was.
And and that's all of it, it happens, so, community con, it was called, they called it. Was called community compact, the idea was to get someone from every board and committee. Elected, appointed volunteer to together once a quarter. To have everybody in there so that you could have have it. Al- almost like a, almost like a. What's Snowford County system called? Almost like you could get. You know, a buy-in, and it was a great plan, it just never really got executed.
Yeah, quarterly, quarterly is.
Especially because, like you said, it's just a lot of the same people, so.
Yeah.
Like, oh, I saw you yesterday.
Yeah.
Or I'm here representing three different people.
Right, but, yeah.
All right, so I I think you addressed this a little bit in your packet, but I had. Uh, one of our previous, um. Goals was to codify the role of T A in town bylaw, so. I think I agree with you that that's probably not doable for A P M unless we like. It's not did something else, but maybe if we agreed upon a job description and we got that, this is another bylaw review committee. Start working on a bylaw, that would be a something that we could do in this fiscal year.
Yeah, they don't even know about that one.
I. I I don't know, I uh, not in the, I think this is short-term, that would be like.
But yeah, multi, multi-year ideas, right, like explore the charter.
We can explore it, like.
I think we're not finished building the platform.
I, yeah, I'm kind of with you, I think, I think that's, that's aspirational, but I.
I think we could do it in three years if we really tried.
You realize that the first time we did this across the street, town charter came out of everyone's mouth.
Yeah. No, I know, but we've made pretty good progress.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily for it, it's just interesting, I think, you hear noise about this, people feel like it's this panacea too. Potentially, they might see as chaos in terms of, I don't think it's supposed to work, it's in charge and fix all that. But that's a, you know, that's.
Put awesome, and then it's all in.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's. Hard.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I I I think at this time we.
I mean, the biggest issue facing town is not enough resources to hire staff to execute all the projects we want to do because of the.
And that would make.
Very limited defined tax base, you know, ninety percent of our revenues are captive prop two and a half each year, and we don't have split tax rate, and it's just residential. And none of that's solved with the charter, that's just structural for the, for the community.
In fact, it would probably make it worse because it would take a lot of resources. In the short term, it would make it worse.
You can get a community compact during our consultants, one of the explicit allowable uses of. In terms of the codified T A role and job description, so as part of the comp class study that we're doing right now. One of the deliverables from the consultant is take our question. That truck, we had a kickoff meeting with everybody, um. The consultant provides questionnaires, fifteen, twenty minutes, what are your eight most important tasks, what are the four things you spend most time on? What's your, um, you know, supervisory relationship, you know, what's, you know, both up and down? Um, if you make an error, what are the consequences of it, what support do you receive, pretty, you know, robust questionnaire. And then take that and interview every person with a particular title, so they don't necessarily need to interview, you know, fourteen patrolmen in police. Patrol officers in the police department, um, but you know, there's only one executive assistant to this, like, words, okay, it's a new. Um, and then from there, they do their wage study and all that, but they also produce job descriptions. For each and every position, so once we're finished with the study, we're going to have not only universal job descriptions, but consistent ones in the way that they're structured. So there will be, uh, yeah, and then there's, of course, feedback from H R myself too about. You know, yes, that's what this person's maybe doing, but what the position, or what should be doing based on. Employment agreements or whatever, so it's not set, it's not asked to call and send it to us.
Can you make sure the phone center gives you the twenty fifteen job descriptions they did with them? That you want to see how they change. That you don't see the same job description, you just.
It's a good, it's a good point.
We've asked you a few times, if David isn't center, you don't be sent.
Yeah.
Can you remind me that, like, timeframe for this, like, when do they expect to have that?
We are waiting on one questionnaire, that was due last Thursday, so one outstanding, and we won't move on to interviews. Um, so we're a week behind at this point, um, but they're slated to be done in late May or June.
Any more engagement with bargaining groups at all? And any interest?
The the highway group has been very interested and engaged and has, you know, met separately and taken it very seriously. The ones who have engaged, I think, the most, um. Police and fire are, you know, they're at least this part in the, in the process, um, their job descriptions are very much. Set by, you know, statutory obligations in lots of, in lots of ways.
Yeah.
Um, so, so far, not so much. Sure they will be.
It is engaged, yeah.
Um, even before my kickoff meeting, when I had the all staff for that, every, every highway person was here, they were asking questions, they've been. Because part of. The legitimacy of the study is people feeling like it actually happened, that is wrong.
Right.
Not just feeling, actually, actually. Um, so, excuse me, uh, I definitely won't have something for the, um, for the annual town meeting. um, for the annual town meeting for a town administrator by law to even like, you know, lots of contemplation beforehand, uh, but taking um, what Colin Center did through your design and then what through the comp class. Um, and then to steal my favorite phrase, the Norfolk County Sheriff talks about R and D being his favorite thing, rip off and do with Kate. So like, I'm also just gonna like look at other kid. I lost certain respect and accent go in there.
Would we? I guess this is a question about execution. Would we be providing the general by law review committee like an example? Are they going to participate at all or is it something that's coming just out of the slot?
So it's semantic, but it's not yet a bylaws. So like.
Okay.
Uh, but really, I I think they should be brought along. That's part of establishing the procedure on it. But I wouldn't expect them to craft something from nudging, right?
So.
Be presenting a much more fully baked idea than most.
I I've been looking into this problem of.
Yeah.
Uh, you bring it up all the time. The the sorry, like, let's not reinvent the wheel. Um, it turns out this might be for a future discussion. Turns out there's a AI company out there right now working specifically for municipal government, creating.
Ripoff bot two thousand.
Basically, uh, policy creation.
Yeah.
You know, bots that are able to know uh, what size town you are, get all the policies around towns that are the same size and content that you are, and then develop and present you policies based on all of the other local policies. It's Massachusetts based. Um, it's a, it's a project with MIT. And um, they're actually looking for piloting towns. So um, this is a problem that comes up over and over and over again. And what they're trying to solve is what Jeremy's going out and doing all the time anyway, which is finding the docs, summarizing them and applying them to our town. So anyway, I was throwing that out there. I know we're not supposed to be in solution mode, but that's something that sort of piqued my interest recently.
What happens when all the surrounding towns also use that tool?
Then all of our policies.
We all converge.
Yes, converge. But I mean, that's what's happening anyway, is my point.
That that's what ask general laws.
Right, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, OIG, the Office Inspector General has template stuff for all sorts, right? The design selection procedure. I just changed six things. You know, eighteen points, twenty points or um, so DOR has something similar that I kind of use as this.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I want to do something easy. Uh, flip back to your quadrant there. Um, another achievable goal that's been on my list for, uh, you know, maybe getting done is uh, maybe it starting to create an intranet. Okay, so we have a local document store. But HR doesn't have a website. So I can't go find the HR policies that pertain to me. I have to search for them and hopefully they show up in a document repository.
Yeah.
Or maybe I don't have permissions to them yet, but HR would print one and give it to me or email it to me. Why can't I self serve that?
Katie and Katie, it's actually since Katie and our HR coordinator, Jen are actively working on that.
Achievable by by July. Yeah.
If you look at the website.
Internal. Sorry, Katie.
I'm sorry. No, if you look at the website now, if you look at the bottom of it, it's something that's already been created. But Jen and I just haven't had the time to like work on it and actually get anything on there, but there is like a login for employees or boards. Once we get it going, then we can add people.
Oh, you're on the website website you're talking about. I was thinking SharePoint, but if you can do that with the current website, yeah.
And then, yeah, so we have a framework for it. It's just not built out with anything useful in it.
Yeah. Is that going to also populate on the new website?
But never mind.
Like I was trying to get it um, done as much as I can before the new website um, cutoff date so that they can bring it over as much as we can get done before then, they can bring it over.
I think that makes sense. That's a great.
Yes. Sorry. Uh, they have a very, very detailed schedule and they keep us on deadline. Like I I have meetings scheduled through like eighth, May and June with them. Um, so I don't know what I'll handle. I'll find it, but.
It's this sometime this spring.
But like, yeah.
This this spring, April, April event.
Yeah.
Because final, I think probably April.
It's not next week.
Um, and we've we've gone through we've gone through, um, this derails us a little bit, but we've gone through, you know, design meetings, color selection, all sorts of stuff. Um, and one thing that we, if you recall, we added, I met with the library director today, is that we're essentially bringing the library underneath the branding and hosting umbrella of the town website. But it feels distinct and separate once you navigate there from our website and the library has, you know, complete control over it in the same way they do now. But we're standardizing the 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 format and the the branding and, you know, the bill paying. They're not going to be able to impress anymore. Um, so I'm both the library director and I are collectively excited about that.
Yeah, I forgot about that. Again, I keep forgetting about that part. That actually is one of the better parts. It'll be nice because people who visit the library website will be right next to the town website.
So if you go to the Belingham uh, town website, they're on the new Civic Plus ho- hosting Civic Plus Central. Um, and if you navigate to their library, you'll you'll see it just the way it kind of inverts the colors, but keeps the theme. Um, we're going to make it a little bit more prominent. We've got six buttons across the middle of the screen. Um, and one of them is going to be attached to the library.
Okay.
As we just navigate to it.
That's great.
It's been the the trust, the library trustees have been talking about, you know, the the website for like all the years that I've, I mean, the last couple of years. So like, this is really great. That is a good solution.
Great.
Yay, Arpa.
Yeah, it's exciting.
We've, of course, been able to do lots of, you know, big capital investments and like, you know, physical plant stuff and vehicles and fleet. Uh, but this kind of, you know, nice to have addition, like those a few thousand dollars that would have been um, kind of an effort to find in other corners of the budget to have that.
And it impacts us. Everyone uses the website forever.
You will get an award.
They they did awards for the websites at MMA and they were like all Civics Plus websites and we're like, come on. But whatever.
Tease it up for next year.
Yeah, I guess. We'll have to put a really nice photo on the.
So let's see if it plus asks what they call advanced design features. So there's the standard website. And if you want to do anything fancy, it's, you know, we have one in the package and we can add on another one. So the one that we have is like the this static header. So as you scroll down the page, it keeps your the bar up there. So it's navigated to our food. But I imagine the ones that won are just the ones that bought.
They bought like all six models.
Scrolling flashing.
Sign up for email.
Flashing fun.
All right, um, back on the side room, Mike.
Just a specific one in the for the for the next few months would be to, you know, to get to to get trask so that we could use it.
I went hiking through there on Sunday, went hiking by there on Sunday. Yep. There's a lot of old foundations back there. Past the like on the um, border, the Upton and Mendon border, there's. There's nothing there. They're just stone.
That's it. You're up in the Upton Mendon. That's one of.
Up past, you know, on the pipeline up there. Yeah. There's this circle we've been doing the last couple.
That's where one of those pots of land that you don't know who it is and no taxes.
I wonder if that's the one with the old well on it and the and the old foundations that we were just walking through this weekend. Let's look.
Mike.
Design. We encompass people aspect. Financial operational cascade.
Designing for that measurement.
Program.
You want to create the program?
Well, I would say we probably need to create the measurements by part of these things. I'm not sure. Every operation effectively. Yeah.
I I don't even know how we would determine if we were doing it effectively.
Well, the fact that we don't know numbers means we're probably not doing.
That's touche.
Sitting out and basically what are you doing? And you watch, you observe, you understand what they're doing and what's expected, how to measure. So there's time, volume, what have you.
Yeah, I mean, each internal department must have a way to measure themselves. I mean, even if it's not objectively ranked out, yeah.
Right. I mean, I think there's going to be. Bullets, right? Something like that.
Treasurer wants to know that, you know, there's no lost dollars. You know, like there's some basic things they must know.
I mean, how many, how many um, if you're thinking of planning, planning, something, having set, how many uh, open items are, you know what I mean? Unreconciled accounts, things like that. I mean, you you look at volume, response, risk.
Would you want to create like a some sort of mega KPI out of that? Like, are you looking to like algorithm a number of our like complexity and completeness and measure that? Like a a ultimate goal of yours to be able to s- sort of get that the health of the organization?
You you could get there, but I mean, health would be defined if you want.
It has to be a lot of different indicators.
Yeah, no, I just think that, you know, understanding how much stuff is getting done from a service standpoint? What's the cost? Where are the where are the risk mitigation? Where are the exceptions in the processes that we want to make sure we see, understand and resolve? The the survey of the people side that, you know, are you happy with what that comes into is, uh, I mean, I I don't want to single indicators as much as the dashboard. Sure, why not? You know, different waters if you wanted to.
I'm just like, you would want a bird's eye view of quality on the system, right?
Yeah, we need to define all units to what you're looking at. You know, any breaks in, you know, people process, financial.
Yeah. That would be nice.
So I'm doing a Q two financial report. Next slide board meeting. Um, so couple of weeks ago, I emailed all the department heads and I said, you know, I'm I'm on the financial side. I can read the ledger and tell, you know, we're this much of the budget. What I can do is say, you know, we've done this much this year. I said, brag a little bit about your departments and your operations, you know, I want to be able to bring up the select board.
Start there.
And then so a natural follow up to that is, you know, we've done forty five inspections this these quarters. Like, all right, well, can we do ninety? Well, before that, we're supposed to be doing hundred sixteen, like in their contest. I think that's okay. Um, this is more kind of like capital for means to get folks in the rhythm of saying we should be you you find you find what you measure, sort of, so to get folks to tell their own story and.
This is.
So what I've done here is define department management and then all the years say sign and execute department.
You get into quarterly rebounds might be an issue. Yeah, like maybe a business update in a town meeting. You know?
Yeah, well, the departments come and do like a presentation during finance time. It could just have some extra data in it.
They want the context when they come. They're saying, this is what I need.
Right, we don't know why.
What why and what have you done? How can you start to give them information so they can demonstrate? I did this last year. I want this so I can do this.
Right, I could accomplish this much more if you if you just approve this, yeah.
So it's a fact based decision making.
Yeah. Right, coming from specifically from that department, yeah. Like.
It'll be a, it'll feel intrusive. And once they have it and they have it to use it, they're gonna like it.
It's 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 executive review.
All right, I think we have a lot to work here and kind of even whittle down. Is there anything else without going into specific work that anybody else wants to add here?
I just want to refine Mike's earlier one. Before that is the man use. And I just, I was looking more to use professional services to yeah, help us identify town need parcel, right? How do we address our town needs from a language standpoint? It's very similar to what Mike said.
I've had a discussion earlier today about what the future of our planning and man use staff looks like. Um, and said, because I had this conversation earlier, I've said that kind of crosswalk matrix everyone wanted to find it um, as being within a purview of planning and man use department, taking that on. A professional outside help for that, but it being a primary responsibility of staff.
All right, so one one other thing that I had on my notes, which is not so much about well, we we have that annual work, yeah, and so just I wanted to put it out there that and they have the letter again at the beginning. So anyhow, I guess along the way, I guess I want to highlight some of the goals that we've accomplished, but uh, so like, I mean, that's, I don't even know if that's the level of a goal, but it's a thing we need to do. So.
Yeah, uh, yeah, it's one of the, you just every year.
Right.
I think I'm sort of going like, ask a bunch of.
Right.
It's a work.
Right, so but I guess it might be an opportunity to like talk about some of the goals as well. So like, you know, what we, not the goals that we've done, but and where we see this moving forward. So I mean, we've served. Okay, I think it will, it'd be great if that letter could tie into some of the other goals. That's that's.
Is that on KPI? Is that, are you are you talking about our measurement as a board?
Contractually, you're supposed to measure me against to be supposed to.
Oh, okay.
Our uh,
I mean, is it though? I've been thinking about that a lot lately.
That's how it's supposed to work.
Yeah.
But it's it's some of these have have some of these like the policies, right? We have, we as a board have a goal to make sure we get this to, we're we're voting on like end of fiscal year. To make that happen, Jeremy has some goals to get through the process so that it'll be, it'll come on us to review, provide feedback and file a share. So a lot of these objectives might have different level of goals depending on the trend. I thought we were going to ask help for the bottom of that.
Is that?
I thought you were going to say, can everybody get sent?
Well, I do.
That's not our goal.
Right, so maybe maybe it's a thing that we can have an agenda I got to like work through like that. And yeah, I just wanted to put it out there that that's kind of, you know, like it ties into a lot of the goals because I think, you know, historically that's what it's been talking about what's happened, but I think if I guess I want to be intentional about showing that we have been working towards goals, that we've made progress on the goals and that we have future goals and like, you know, it's you know, about our like connection with the community for for all five of the people who read the letter. I don't know if I have a great day, but um, anyhow, I just wanted to to put it out there because I don't want to forget about it.
And I'm not sure how the boards operated in the past, but I um, counsel way had to say we shouldn't have five offers and document it will take forever. Um, so I think soliciting you input and you synthesizing that to something.
So I think that maybe like an agenda, I know where we like, I think after this, we can maybe it's come up with some.
Talk about our top report goals. Okay.
Because I know, right, Mike, you had to ask for us to send paragraphs and then you.
Yeah, it was it was it was interesting where there were there were some common themes.
Right, so we didn't, like we started to, yeah, so and right, we had a lot of overlapping. So I think if we, I just, uh, yeah.
It was it was great. It was collaborative because everybody got a chance to, and all I did was just I I felt kind of like guilty because I didn't, all I had to do was just pull up the four you put together and just.
How do you want to? Twist still?
Team things here.
That's got a four on it.
Yeah, so, um.
Like you said, like I've been buying them.
Yeah, so I think you did know.
We got a lot.
We've got two down here. Revitalize, second cultural, I mean, uh, this is holistic committee assessment, revitalize AdCom and other less than active committees that I want to raise. And then formalized and established capital grooming committee. Um, so I think we can wrap that into a goal of um, revitalizing revitalizing committees and recruiting volunteers, which is a continuation of the previous goal. And then a single line objectives underneath that would be um, applicable for specifically applicable for committee and capital grooming. Obviously, we're working towards those. Those are already been part of the thing about establishing goals mid-year is you kind of have to reflect the stuff, reflect, has to be reflective of stuff. We've already been working. Already been working. Taking those across.
So I think when I see that, I see the holistic committee assessment bigger than a red box, not within the the five month timeframe we had for this particular. So that's maybe a broader thematic. And move that to F one twenty six to continue, but we've got two different levels. Better apple and Agnon in the next five months, that better. Because honestly, you should be thinking you can be, have some high level goals that we should be capturing, I mean, through multiple fiscal years, you get what I mean? One comes to mind for that.
Yeah, I love the idea of showing how these sort of more immediate goals relate to the, the big picture goals. And then ideally, eventually to some sort of.
Like that whole, yeah, the holistic committee assessment goes back to what you were saying about, you know, how do we get succession planning and get that whole engagement, right?
So then I think we can, I think it's reasonable to combine, you know, revitalize, reestablishing, revitalizing, agricultural committee, and capital, that, that can be a single. So it's. I don't want to rank these or anything like that, think of, think of kind of these two as.
Uh, what do you mean, is it murder board?
I'm not sure.
Just, just put a, just put a letter next to it.
And I, I'm just giving my big script before, now as I'm going through this, it's just that.
Use emojis.
Um, who is, was it, um, my purpose, we put this in a parent medical over here because I wanted to make sure we have some, you know, um.
It's actually, we should, I think, it's a little condescending.
Um, but of course policies and procedures here, these are the same thing.
Sorry, so, little tangent to the policies and procedures, but do they include um, something about when they will be revised, and do they, do they individually include schedules of when to revisit them?
Policy, policy, we talked about that a couple, maybe three, four meetings ago about policy, policy, and like, how policies would be created in the workflow, they would go through if they approved.
Yeah, when they get reviewed, well, I know that the school committee has a, a policy committee where they actually, like, give regular updates. I guess they have a lot of policies for this school committee, like, but, um, and also the, the library trustees also have been going there, they have a number of policies as well, so, like, I just, anyhow, like, I don't know if they are, all have their own sort of schedule.
No, they don't, they, we can, we can standardize that.
Yeah, I mean, because that, that could be, like, those are typically together and like, I don't know. I guess finalize and adopt, or I guess.
Yeah, that's what's.
Same here, policies, shut up, have a new schedule.
Right.
Can, can you put those first two in ops together to define parks, highway, formalize, or design? Is that all the same thing?
Yeah, I think this define highway responsibilities, facilities, ground maintenance, probably at some point to, or start, I think that's more.
Langry.
Yeah, so that's easily these, so there. Uh, I'm just gonna read these in case you can't see the folks on there, so longer operation.
Think of fun intent.
Sorry?
That's what it looks like from here. Crafting a, oh.
Creating two thousand three.
Creating a town internet, ah, see?
Find a question, please.
Okay, okay.
But it's.
Start there and then.
Design and execute department measurements, that's a multi-year, next year goal, so defining what it is we want to measure, and then getting together how to measure it. We can almost exaggerate, we're good enough for stuff, so that's why I think that multi-year or next year goals are good. Um, measure some of these more aloud, because we see some other ones we want to put together, define mission statement and core values of town government, objectively measure culture and measure that year over year, establish regular bylaw and change procedures, starting in twenty twenty five annual town meeting, comprehensive inventory and plan for town land, and acquire trash access and operating.
So trash and land and measurements can go together, department measurements and ops and culture measurements and.
Yeah.
That's what I would do.
Yeah, I think the, the cultures, you know.
It's part of the greater KPI that defines the.
And then, this one, I think, these two kind of stand on their own, um.
I, I feel like we can't do the mission statement, core values of service unless they stand on their own and we put some effort into them.
Yeah. So A, B, C, T, E, F, G, we've got the seven.
But you can cut G off and put it out, put it in the future.
Yeah, I think we're just gonna do that.
Yeah. Might just be happening, and that's just like, okay, we just achieved a goal, guys.
Yeah.
And now we have the framework coming out from four of them. Renounce this, so I think, I think defining the mission statement and core values of the town government, I know a couple of you were kind of excited about that prospect when you heard that M M A. It's funny that I call it M M A, because I'm not going to do it as M M A, not to as country as you want, but that's how.
Well, it's the Mass Municipal Association, oh, I don't remember what they called it last year, do you? Is that it, just MMA conference?
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
A couple of you that mentioned that, and I think that drives some of these.
But would be nice if there were, like, a unifying theme to a lot of goals, so. So maybe each of the other goals can, like, have some, like, mission statement.
If we're a right to farm community, let's make a mission about it. Right, like, let's say it out loud, and, and not just in a bylaw, like, if that's what we want to have represent the identity of our town, then we need to elevate it to that level, that kind of thing.
I feel like, I mean, you know, defining the core values, it probably shouldn't be just us, also, like, this seems like this is a, like, if there's a way to engage the broader community, uh, because I, I think that is one of the values, so, like, I mean, we could propose that.
Didn't the master plan start to get into some of this?
It did, and that was actually one of the things on my list that I didn't mention, like, we haven't had a formal.
Check in.
Well, I guess, well, even a formal, like, ceremony, or, or anything sort of, uh, like, the master plan, it finished, and then, you know, they got the award from C M R P C.
They did come and present a final like, plan and talked about how they'd like to see it go on, we got, we got a nice packet and everything.
And we had the presentation.
In session?
Mm-hmm.
I don't remember that.
I mean.
I remember, I remember, I remember they presented the plan to us, but they didn't really.
There wasn't a PowerPoint, I remember Amber second.
They sent it.
Just mix in those two things.
The, the community.
Well, second. That, that, I don't think, man, I really remember it being here and everything.
Well, I remember Billy, he's only coming up to us.
I remember Billy coming. It wasn't a full on presentation.
No. Yeah.
Especially.
So what, my, my.
Oh, I just, I didn't. That's bigger than the red box.
Yeah, oh, I think so, well, right.
Especially if we, if we enlarge the participants, right, which I think actually agree with, but also make that.
It makes it bigger.
Some support to help facilitate, enlarge more people through that type of exercise, right, would probably be a good thing.
Well, right, and, well, yeah, so maybe it can move into the long term goals, but I feel like it would be great if we, if we did, like, to, to pull, say, the department heads, as well as, like, the boards and committees, like, get their engagement, like, it, like, I mean, broader community engagement would be great, but like, maybe this can be a step after we do some of the other.
Well, certainly, but there may be an educational aspect to this. When we start to broaden
I mean.
audiences to make, to understand, like, why, I mean, I didn't go to that
Right.
session, but people that went were kind of excited about it, I'm not sure what that, I'm not really excited about it, honestly.
It's, well, I think it was more like, I guess, my sort of broader goals are about community engagement, and like, I think that we have worked towards like transparency, right, over a number of years, we, there's transparency, but I still feel like.
Transparency is a topic.
There are, yeah, communication gaps between sort of what, what we do and what the community sees, like, I don't know, like, when um, and, and, yeah, so I, I just feel like there's, there are ways, I don't know what they are yet, but are there are ways that we could engage the community more so that we share, we figure out ways of sharing, like, what we're doing and how it relates to some sort of big picture about what, what it is that we do.
So you got the, you got the, the action around communication, make sure everybody understands what's going on, but also had overarching understanding of why we're doing these things within the context of this umbrella. I would say there's I'm not sure, I, I could say I could define a mission and core values for the town and the timeframe have, I feel like there's some
Well.
prep work that we should, we should, how do we go about doing this, that's.
Example, there were like a couple examples, yeah.
But, yeah, I think it'd be interesting to kind of lay the groundwork in the next five months.
Yeah.
So in F one twenty six, we're actually going to go through the process of defining, so we can go in with a, at least an understanding of how we need to do.
It, it would be nice, we could, yeah, we could talk about examples, I mean, one example was the, you know, the preamble of the constitution, you know, there's like like, some of those.
You should be able to ask any, any staff of the town, any person in the town, you know, what the town is and how the town thinks, and get similar answers if everybody is cognizant of a shared mission statement. I use the right to farm community as one, because that's what we bring up a lot here, um, and we think that that's a core value of our town, just based on our experience here, but until we open that up for public comment, how do we really know? Like, that's one of them, and if we did know, some of the discussions we have with the public might be more succinct, because we would just say, look, uh, you know, we put this, I think they were saying, like, what's your town's statement, like, read the emblem on your town, what does it say? Ours says Netlock Plantation sixteen fifty nine, but other towns have, uh, you know, uh, you know, these three words that bring them all together or whatever. It's not just a statement, it's something like, they all believe, and if you ask them, they will all tell you what it is. It's the same thing at my company, it's probably the same thing at your company, um, businesses, towns, they have ethos. And the ethos is either amorphous and driven by whoever's loudest, or we all get together and agree on it and try to stick to it, and that's, that's what these kind of grandiose statements of identity are. And one of the things the, um, bylaw review committee would like to do is, uh, open up bylaw for public comment, and they're not entirely sure how to do that. Um, is that just, we just hold a public meeting and we just invite people, what does that advertisement look like? I think that there's sort of a general, larger picture thing that we haven't figured out, which is, how do we get feedback in a structured way?
I understand what mission statement and core values is.
Yeah.
But I would say we've been in a situation where it's been, whoever's been the loudest.
Yeah.
In that example.
Yep.
So then the question I have is, how do we, the objective would be to get to an ethos, and so everybody's all the same understanding and the same core values. I think there's a lot of thought and prep needs to be done, how do we, not only what they are, but how do we bring the town together around it to, to.
Carefully approach it.
You know what I mean?
I hear you.
To me, there's a lot of, even the next five months, we, we, we actually go to other towns that whip into three words.
Well, right.
And they, we actually go up and we, you know what I mean?
Right.
We do homework, and we say, we bring back a, an idea or plan to actually develop that next year.
See, I, I would, I I would suggest that you know, leadership isn't give, isn't isn't given, it's taken. And part of the whole elective process and how the five of us are sitting here is, it's kind of our role, but maybe not to define it, but to quantify it. The question is, how do you get everybody, because everybody are on the, well, how do we get everybody to buy in, well, I I, I think it's very difficult to do that, maybe the, maybe the best thing would be, maybe from, if, if I, if I had to go for any, any source, I would reach out to historic. Because that's where it comes from.
So I agree, it's good to, uh, to hear from them, but I also think that people are more likely to be to erase something where they feel like their voice was heard, so, so, um.
It's good, I'm free on.
I assume people are leaving kinds of townwide mainly, sort of thing, but I don't want to get too much into it.
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, I did tie it into, right, just community outreach and communication and transparency, like, I just think, so if we did any sort of, like, town mailing, to, to let people know that there are board and committee vacancies, like, a lot of people don't know that, like, I was surprised at all the, the people who wrote about the land stewardship, because it was in that article in the press. But like, but, and yet, so there are people stepping up for things, and then there are a lot of other positions where we don't have people stepping up, probably because they don't know that it's an option.
Yeah.
But like, if, anyhow, but like, potentially, right, outreach to the community could include some of these other goals as well.
So like, we need a marketing plan?
Yeah, I was like, you know what, there, I, I talked with someone.
I talked with someone too.
What's like, like a communications person for in the town, well, I mean, I'm like, oh, that, that would be nice.
I talked to the professional who makes, um, like, marketing videos for towns to promote things, like, the Providence Culvert is going to, you know, have four months of delay, and like, how do we make you informed about that, they do videos and social media, and it's like this whole thing, and I thought to myself, that's absolutely a thing we need, um, but it's more of a marketing plan.
I, all I'm saying is, I, I think it would be great to get everybody's input. It's just that it's, it's a tough thing to do.
I mean, ultimately, you, you represent the community, so getting, getting input and feedback from the community is important in the decision making class.
Right.
But I think in terms of a goal or a strategic execution, defining a mission statement for the town. Be a multi-year you know, start to, you know, have regular select meeting, because that's one of the schedules, I have, how to best utilize this. Um, besides that multi-year role, we go through what we have here, formalizing, establishing base, or I synthesize that, um, specifically, um, some points on time. Policy adoptions, two, board chart design, we're going to some point, I would put three, um, department measurements, that's culture methods, four. And, um, kind of comprehensive land inventory and plan and execution strategy would be five.
I know.
And then everything else that's written up here, um, decent, you have, and one without a letter, are all fiscal twenty six beyond. So I think we've got five fiscal twenty five goals, um, and then this multi-year, if we're, it's an overarching theme for the town, so it being a multi-year role, I think, is very important. I'm gonna synthesize this into a much more succinct document type, not written.
Two page memo.
Sure.
The goal is a great, a two page memo.
That's the goal, and, uh, um, you know, with some little points here, and then I'll circulate it for folks to, or get commentary on it too, before we finalize it, put it in the packet, or maybe, we can, we can post it on this, like, order my page on the home as well. And then we can come back and have this meeting in July and say, how do we measure against this, and then, you know, do you stand for fiscal twenty six?
I think, well, so you've got five things here. Is that the end of the discussion, or do you want to take those and define success on the goals you're stating? These five things, what does success mean by at, at the end of this year? Do you want to go into that, or sort of like, how, like, so who's responsible, or do you want to think that through a little bit as part of your line? Personally, I think that the cultures, the mission, and the core values, I think that. Personally, I think that the cultures, the mission, the core values, I think that squarely is on this board to drive that film. Right? I don't expect you to participate.
Oh, right.
You know what I mean? Whereas, you know, there may be some things you look at after and you say, no, I feel that's something that I know how that we could do.
HR related ones, like.
Yeah, and. Don't look at, don't, the policies, the board charts. Yeah, for sure. Um, I think. I think it'd be something that I'm thinking about, and we're a little more sharing draft and then getting feedback in a select word session about what we're.
Yes, it's great to propose them and this.
Do you want to, do you want to, do you want to think about the definition of success? Do you want to bring still in that thing?
Yeah, uh, if folks are learning to talk about what success looks like for these. Um, so A is formally establish a governing committee and, well, revitalize less than active committees with two sub-points of. So. For me, success for agricultural community would, as a political community would be, you know, appointing.
You say, okay. So, that is, this is.
That would be nice. Specific in measure.
And. Create a grid of committees and like, you want to add that other thing in there? Like, that's just more of a spreadsheet type of thing where we at least start the organization process of creating a document. To hold our metadata or something of the sort. Um, or a procedure by which to go review each committee and determine their validity or purpose or whatever. Because if you're focusing just on these two, then you still need to come back and come up with a process for the other.
We have to be able to have them on the next page.
Yeah, so we went for a whole, like, one of this last term.
Oh, as a future state, okay. Sorry.
I mean, I guess there there, that is the question of like, can we like, chip away at tasks towards the long-term goals, right? We have these goals and we want to make sure we do, that there might be an opportunity to also.
Being smart about it, we would only, is the.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So we can have a reach goal, super successful to have.
Okay. Yeah, I like that.
B is uh, policy adoption, so we. Phone to adopt.
Yes.
Yeah.
C, finalize the board design chart to execute with the fiscal twenty six budget. The sub-point of defining highway parks responsibility of facilities and ground maintenance.
Sorry, well, can, can, would that also include something about like, uh, assistant TA?
Yeah, so this one, we wrote, wrote this one first, I think, yes, more specific.
Right.
So following some returns on, so really, I've had asks for additional positions in fiscal twenty six. So what the board chart ends up looking like, um, I think. Is going to depend on what, you know, ultimately this board recommends and to to town meeting. Um, so I don't know if I want it to be refined to say, you know, say it's not district for operations.
But you just define it in a generic enough way that the structure is there.
I think we just said, any additional goals, if we had aside, when we get them into the budget, it's a different question, right? But the board chart should be optimal design. Maybe we have three new positions. And the one we actually might have proposed in this year's budget, but the other two are still vacant because we can't afford to do.
That, that's a, that's a really important in the previous organization, I've been a part of their, you know, the HR function was built out and said, you know, benefits coordinator, policies vacant. But like, that position existed, your board chart, it was defined in the, in the recognition clause of the non-union, you know. Policies and procedures.
And it gets back to, so, okay, we're not going to surprise anyone in FY twenty seven because this is what we need to build. This will be coming, this is what we do now.
Right, we're not going to put ten parks employees on there, but we might put one, that kind of thing, yeah.
So success for me would be a budget document that comes out of this board to include a fully built-out.
When you say comes out, like, something that will be for the annual town meeting or like? When you, when you say, when you say a budget document that comes out, what do you mean?
So historically, the budget document has been the thin column. I want there to be a select board budget document.
But I mean, would this be like, to share with the public for annual town meeting? That, okay.
And I also want, so.
So that's kind of early.
That'd be too.
So that, I mean, that's, that's soon, right? I mean, at the fiscal year, we got like, so.
Yeah.
This, right, so that's.
These get executed in kind of.
Yeah.
Parallel.
Right, but I mean, they've got earlier deadlines, right? Some of them are like, end of fiscal year, we want to have the thing done. Some of them are, some of them are, right. So that one, I mean, right. You're gonna have our annual town meeting in May, and so like, yeah, so that one's earlier, I guess, that's it, that's my point is.
And it's also my hope to, so for a special town meeting, we could walk through with moderator. And I kind of, I took each article and gave a short explanation about it, and we wrote. I, I want to build that out to a more formal document that we can post online and share in advance of the annual town meeting. And then have printed versions of that, so folks can pick it up and they say, what does raise and appropriate mean? Well, it means two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for this year's select boards, two sentences, here's. Is the warrant that gets sent out to folks. I first moved to a town. I pre-selvedered a town, we're in a city, so we can have this. Um, and when I got the warrant in the mail, and I work in this government, what is this? This doesn't mean anything to me.
That's a beauty there.
Yeah.
That's move back to the motion.
Um, exactly, and folks don't see the motion, right? It just says raise and appropriate a sum of money, and I'm, I'm sitting there at home and saying, you know, was, do I even want to show up for ten thousand dollars or is it four million dollars? Um, so I hope to have a.
It's the excitement of not knowing.
That would have cost.
So, uh, so success here would be, um, you know, a fully built-out board chart as part of the twenty twenty six budget presentation. And this is something that Katie and I have been working on since kind of restarted, when, you know, there's. We kind of got bogged down in some of the details of like. Yeah. Where, where the assessor, where the library director sit, and what, what's the dotted line number one, what's the solid line number? Your independently elected boards and then the day-to-day operations within town. So, and we got locked down in that too much, and I think we're, we'll kind of divorce the appointing authority and just talk about the day-to-day operations and then have some. Say this is appointed, not appointed by someone.
Okay, we got.
Yes, otherwise it comes on. Yeah, you have spiders. Four other elected boards this year. Right, and then can you. Plan department measurement and subjectively measure culture, measure year over year.
C for define.
Subjectually measure culture and measure year over year. I think we need to be establishing by annual survey and getting those out. By annual policy reviews every other year, by annual surveys this year. Um, getting one of those out before June thirtieth. And survey, I have three questions. You are additional abouts here, okay?
Good one to put your check mark next to.
So, launch the survey, you also define, right, like, define. I mean, the survey.
I would say define at least one department measure to make it attainable. Because I mean, some of these departments, we might want a lot of them, right?
Right.
I'm just trying to make it achievable.
Yeah, but, but to me, it's got to be meaningful to, to have one.
Oh, right, one meaningful, I'm throwing the word meaningful in there is fine.
One, a department does not live by one measure. You, you know what I mean? Do they implement one measure next year, but to define the. We're not talking fifty. And I mean.
In aspects.
Sure, the expectation should be set that it's not.
So, no, but I mean, you could go sit down in any department and it's, it's, it's volume. I mean, it's, it's, it's fair, it's almost predefined when you break it down, but it's just. If you don't do it, like, if you're not working that way, it'll seem weird. But I think defining implements the hard.
Okay.
How to measure something is literally words.
So, if you look at city level budget, which looks a lot like, I was supposed to provide budget, it was a lot like my boss's previous communities, but. Um, the way departments were organized and they're budgeted. It had department discretion, um. You know, current fiscal year accomplishments, next fiscal year objectives, and, you know, changes to budget from practice. In terms of accomplishments and objectives, you know, as you're getting to the case of a budget, your fiscal twenty six objectives should then translate to your fist. Your next budget year's accomplishments, right, kind of flows through. Here's what we wanted to do, like, do we do? So as these budget meetings are coming up now, I want to have those in that mindset of what, what are your objectives for twenty twenty six? And like, write them down. And then I think from there, we can naturally look, all right, my objectives are to, kind of like this conversation here, well, we need to make it smart. We need to make it measurable, your, your objective can't be, you know, continuing great customer service, it has to be. Measuring, you know, providing, you know, resident surveys or something like that. You know, increase, decrease turnaround time on, on permit applications. You can say they don't this long this year, this long next year. So if we. Want a strong budget meeting, so maybe we're struggling, so, but where's our little this and that, um, you know, I can at least get folks in that, in that headspace.
But even that is a level above. Think about what we just said, if the measure is turnaround, right? The objective is reduce turnaround. Do they, do they know what their turnaround time is? If they need to how to measure it, do they know how many volume, what the volume is like? Every, every, every measure that would be a volume, it's time, it's a volume of output, you know what I mean? I would suggest, like. This, I mean, it's more, the financial stuff stays there in mind. The most part. Marrying your financial to operational, probably the, uh, insurance of that, right?
Maybe for like, snow removal or something, you know.
No, but particularly for some of the services.
Right.
It's not, like, I, I would think that the, ju- just the, the building department.
So, so, what, I just think that defining the measurements literally just. Not your objective, what do you do?
Yeah.
Because you, you, you know what you do.
Yeah, you're not quantifying, you just.
Quantify what you do, and then you drive your objectives by understanding what that data was.
So I'm in charge, so what you're saying is it's not reducing turnaround time, it's saying turnaround times.
Yes, exactly.
And if you define it, you then choose to either implement or not. You may not have the needs now. You can say the right measurement is, you do X.
I understand what you're saying after you've. Said it so many times, now I'm hearing it. I feel like that's still going to be difficult for them to do, maybe. Because they're, they're gonna take some time to hear that.
And it's not going to be even. Some of them.
Right.
Like, Chief person can pull up the, the law and say, this is how many.
Right, some of the speeding tickets we did.
That's how you do it, but it's, yeah, absolutely.
I think, like, senior services already does, it's like number of, like, calls, number of people who not come in for different services. And the library does it in terms of patrons and events and how you do it. So they, some of them, I mean, for those I know, they have.
Yeah.
Some of this is the communication strategy you've been talking about, where it's not necessarily even your community communications departments. I think I've defined it, you know, I think I've said it, but you know, I want to be able to like brag about this. We're doing two select boards, so, but then to be able to say, this is, this is why your appropriation document.
Yeah, and, and some of them already have, like, for police, it just was recently accredited. So they have a, a whole bunch of measurements, right, that, that we could use from that, from that. Same thing with fire. But there are other, like I said, some of the, some of the other ones that service the town, some services of the patrons, the residents.
Do they need to like, do you think they need to have, if you're, if you're a service-facing department, you need to have a, a matching KPI that tells the same story? Of the delivery of the service? That's what I was just thinking while you were talking.
You're gonna start basic stuff, some people already captured, the hardest part is those terms that I don't even need to capture data.
Right.
You don't want to show patients, so you may say, that is a valid measure, but we can't implement it yet. Perhaps we need to go get a workwear system. Right? Um, but, you know, senior center in library, you, you badge in and they got accounts. Now, the other side of this is how you effectively use, use it for bragging, you know what I mean? Just, there's information out there. Question is, how do, this leads to telling the story, right?
First step is to gather the data, if they're not.
Yeah, and then consolidate, right? Everybody has their own little pot and then it's just gonna be consolidated for easy aggregation and visualization.
Yeah, that's, you know, second or third order.
By RBI.
If you have the data, that stuff's easy.
Getting that one.
I've been using Siri like. I ran my space for each.
There's a new purge editor coming next.
Right. He is, uh, a land.
What the hell is that?
So, success there.
I think building that press. The other thing I was thinking about was just engaging with RFP, what has you to get that resource from the councils, actually, whether it's CMRPC or that, you would say. Work with us on town needs, town resources, marry.
So like, get something in the budget for that, but then.
Yeah, I think it would be practice of that FY twenty six, execute what we need to do at the town meeting if we need to.
So there is, there is a part of our services with CMRPC for technical assistance, I think it's probably not large enough.
You mean, yeah, what? Size of the ask is would be.
We, we, we think about, like, this is July this year, like FY twenty five starts, and we're having this conversation. We can do labor to probably execute this round. Because it needs to be, we're doing the labor portion of a lot of the stuff, right, to get, we need to.
Yeah, so in terms of the Congress meeting, I think the, the task from that is, you know, procuring technical assistance. Um, and I think the. Success for twenty twenty five would be defining what the ask is, which has to do with both scope and anticipated.
Yeah, it, I decided to do it in town third or, I think, or something. Yeah, I had like RFP slash scope and then, uh, identifying the dollars to be appropriated to me.
Yeah, that's gonna be, that's gonna be tied to turn, for town meeting. It could be what we aspire to do as a whole.
In terms of appropriation?
Yeah, yeah, getting a, getting a dollar value, I mean, we can get a.
We would replace it.
Yeah.
What we should pre-cash and fall.
What's so great about cities is they're very, 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 very tough years.
I think the other thing is we could actually data gather on this one. You know, get, collect the information, so once again, we're ready to go.
Yeah, we have access, yeah, that's what we.
I've got, I've missed this already.
I mean, there's some, you know, like, athletes are so, so, they have as well.
Document has.
Right. Right.
That's called.
The foreign scope, what is it, for technical assistance?
The drastic separate on that, those are the trash question.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that, that's a, um, one of the defined steps. All right, A, B, C, D, and E, with a multi-year role of defining state of core values, town government, so. Didn't set a success measure for that. Um, I think the board has had a couple more conversations on what. How and what to gather. Uh, okay, that one being a little more amorphous, because I think the, the whole endeavor is a little more amorphous.
We could do a charter first.
Do you remember any of the towns that you, where Mrs. Irving's had. Value is gonna be.
That's the slide, so there's the Cavalier North that.
Yeah, can we do some little, run some little?
But I mean, I think that they're like, they're pretty like, like, just so you know, they're like teamwork, communication, stewardship, community engagement, safety and wellbeing, responsiveness and respect. So they're not like, they're not. They're core values, right?
That's a little more realistic for our town.
Right.
Mission statement, I think for our towns.
I think, yeah, mission statement.
What if we could get the core values out? I think we could drive a mission statement.
Statement could be.
Maybe.
Right.
Well, doesn't the, doesn't the state laws define with the mission or what, what a town's purpose is? You know, I, I mean, to me, the core values is the, that's kind of the deliverable. Because we think those ideas or those traits or that culture, you know, is what.
I see your point, the mission statement is to effectively officially deliver on our staff.
I mean, I understand some of the profits of the mission statements will be a little more creative. But I, I kind of agree, it's the sort of the mission that is, you know.
Is that the only thing we do is meet our staff or are we obligated?
I think it's, but I think it's, it's more the way that. But the culture.
Our, our objectives are objectives.
Right, I, I mean, I, I think that, as, as I'm listening, I think, I, I think it's, it's not so much where we end up, but how we get there. I guess that's what I'm saying. Yes, that's. That's, thanks, thanks for saying it, because to me, that's, see, that's when I, what I said, every, every resident has a voice. And when I say the culture and, and, you know, those core values, I mean, that's it. I mean, I think that's.
Yeah, like putting unity in your, one of the town, someone who responded during that talk said.
Save, unity, liberty and unity.
There you go, liberty and unity. That's, that's powerful, right?
Sure, really.
Unity, progress, fairness, peacefulness, security, wellbeing, and stewardship. Sort of extracted from the free handle.
Okay.
I can't read without thinking this.
I'm just a bill.
Yeah.
Do you know that?
Yeah, yeah.
I always think about conjunction, junction.
What's your assumption?
Mended select board was singing for.
Well.
All right, we synthesized this a little bit, um, I think the only one that you will, you, I think what I'm hearing here is core values first, mission statement derives from that. Kind of, a little bit, so.
Think about all the good townware with our. Statement on it.
Core values on it?
Yeah.
All right, um, I, I think this is really a session.
Yeah.
All right, so we was moving on to our next agenda item, which was, uh. Yeah, so right, next meeting's next week, sorry. Our next meeting isn't until February, which also is next week. And so, yes, we have the six-thirty regular meeting and then we also have the February twelfth meeting. So six P M joint meeting is in com, so this is, is it gonna be in?
Yeah, uh, so it's at, it's in the school committee room, which is all people, but I think it's at.
It's a multi.
The multi-board.
And multi-board with finance committees of both towns, uh, and U R S D school committee, and the Upton select board and, uh, and the select board, so. Where they, where they have the, the, the school committee meeting? Um, and they have, right, it's, they have, um. Sorry, it's set up for the hybrid meeting, so. And then we have our regular meeting on the nineteenth, so we got a few meetings in, so.
Is that the second floor of Nittmuck?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. What does that mean, the room's called?
What's that?
That room, what are they called?
So they usually record, so they did, they reported like live and cast to YouTube and Zoom.
Okay, so we just can talk about.
Anyway, he, he used to, I remember Marushchak used to run them both, right? And then if somebody wanted to say something, he would pull them from, you know, the broadcast into the Zoom meeting so they could talk.
And they have, um, yes, I can't remember his name, I think Sam is, like, they have somebody running the sort of tech side of the meeting and so, yeah, so they.
Pretty involved.
Yeah.
But it was brilliant because, you know, they could really limit it, who could speak.
Do, do all anticipate or at least three of you anticipate being in attendance, I just want to make sure if I posted this meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, multi-board, oh, yeah.
Gina, she saw at six P M.
Who's gonna be the person who doesn't show up to the ball?
All right, so then February nineteenth, regular meeting.
And nothing on the twenty-ninth, and then we resume first week of March?
Sorry, uh, twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, is that?
Seven, we even have the twenty-first this year.
Oh, right, leap year.
Yeah, so, right, so not on the twenty-sixth and then we. Well, should be going every other week except we got budget meetings, so it's gonna be.
Those are the couple of weeks, March, we can, once I, you know, come up with a nightly kind of budget schedule, which we could talk about next week or after, likely next week. About what nights work for you all. We can go three Wednesdays in a row, or we can throw a Tuesday in there to get it done.
Historically, it's harder to move from Wednesday, I don't know if that's still the case, but.
And then we'll, we'll pull a bit as well.
So if there isn't anything else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Eight twenty-nine.
You need to whack that thing.
Man.